There we go, and that's the way to start, all right. Well, we've, as usual, have just a few things to do today, so the good news is that Pat and I only have, really, this first work session to do, the rest of it is up to the rest of you to stay on time and to behave yourselves. So, Pat and I are going to try to keep everybody well behaved this morning as we go through several facility, actually, different facility topics. And I don't know if, Dr. Garza, if you wanted to say a few words to get us started, or if there's anything you want to do to get the meeting going, or just turn it back over to Ms. Quinn and those folks.
Maybe just a few words, and it's just a reminder, maybe even to the public. We've had work, we've had conversations over this past, I don't know, since September, maybe, at least one topic per month on our capital improvement plan. And we know there's still a lot of work to be done, and so as we move forward, we still have, you know, a lot of these conversations that we're working through over these past several months or so, will ultimately lead to the development of our next iteration of a CIP, which I think will look somewhat different than what we've been accustomed to in the past, which I think is a good thing. You know, what's the next kind of evolution of our capital improvement planning or strategy? So I think all of these conversations are important, and a couple of them we have, we've talked about before, we just haven't been quite, we haven't, we haven't determined our path forward yet, so I'm looking forward to those conversations today. So that's all I would have to say. We have a wonderful facilities team who work very, very hard on our behalf, and so I guess I would turn it over to Jeff and let him get us started.
Thank you, Dr. Garza, Ms. Stork, and as always, Ms. Reed, and the gang, and Ms. Hines, and so forth. The first item that we have is item 1.02 on the Board Doc's agenda, which really is to discuss the educational facility capacity. You know, this item has come up on numerous occasions, and the regulation, the school board policy, rather, 8120.2 articulates size of capacities. And it's been an unfortunate evolution, as our discussions in the past, and Ms. Hines has commented about this previously, that we would desire much smaller schools, but the evolution of Fairfax County, the 10th largest school district in the country, and certainly the largest in the state of Virginia, really has constantly required us to push the upper limits of that from a functional standpoint. So what we wanted to do is, we wanted to go ahead and have that conversation about the educational facility capacity as it related to renovations. And in looking at that, saying that, you know, where we go in and make adjustments for the smaller schools, because we have a number, and you'll have attachments. Attachment A is a school-size summary report, and then you also have another attachment that, actually, the PowerPoint that I probably should be going through that really talks to this. But what you have is, you have a number of small schools, smaller-sized schools. And where we go in, and we all know that really small schools are really inefficient from not only an operational standpoint, from an administrative staffing standpoint, from a curriculum standpoint in terms of offering of programs and so forth. So it's trying to find that right mix, that sweet spot that is appropriate for teaching and learning. And then also for the operational aspects of it. Thank you. So that's really, Ms. Stork, really what we're here to talk about, and I can go through the basic PowerPoint elements that we have that talks about the school size and capacity, and the actual report itself. But in essence, that's what, really, the whole thing, that staff is really bringing this forward because of the discussion from the previous school board work sessions, because of the desire to have that conversation, and because we keep creeping up, which is, which I said again, has evolved over time. Yeah, I'll go ahead and just forward it forward. If I can get this thing to work. Yeah, there we go, it was over here. Over there. Is it on? I did. That one didn't work. Oh, there we go, whoop. Now, it went too fast. I'm trying to get there. Again, I'm pushing to the end. It might be easier.
There you go, right there, thank you.
So really, what this chart, in the beginning of the chart shows, you know, you can look at the number of different projects that we have, that we have a design capacity below 600. And one of the things that we were looking at, as I stated in the school board policy, that it talks about for new schools, we're really looking for concurrence where it's appropriate, where we go in and do renovations, to really make the size of the school a more standardized size, or more towards that standard that is in the school board policy. And again, I said where is appropriate, because certainly if we were to go in and just automatically do that, if we didn't have a need in the surrounding schools, and if we didn't have a need in that existing school, it wouldn't be the wisest investment of the taxpayer's funding. But the point of it is, is where we have that going on, to have that concurrence from this body, that that would be an appropriate way to go ahead and address it. The next slide I have is the middle schools. It really, you know, we can, we can have a conversation here, or I can just go through the rest of this presentation. The middle schools, you'll see that we have six that are of the larger size in the design capacity, and you look at that, really, all of them, in terms of the contrast between the schools that feed into them. And the smallest, on average, is about 1,200, and the largest, on average, is about 1,400 students in terms of the design capacity. Again, prompting the discussion about the disparity between them. One of the conversation points we've had, and in fact, we've discussed in this group, is about Cooper and the upcoming renovation, the size of Cooper, what has happened with some of the programs at different schools and so forth. So really, what we're looking for is more of the continuation of those conversations about the appropriate sizes, and again, where we go in and make adjustments. And this, of course, finally, is the last slide that I have here, is really the high school design capacity. And, you know, we have a wide range. A lot of people are familiar with Westfield, the size of Westfield, when we went ahead and opened Westfield and then added that addition to it. And it really just shows the design capacity components, and also the, for those that are greater than, or below 2,500, 2,500 students. So our recommendations, based upon giving you these soundbites, or snippets, if you will, of information about the elementary, the middle, and the high, is really to go ahead and come up with the following sheet, and then hopefully, there we go. Our recommendation that we have is really to have a minimum design capacity of 600, and a maximum of 950 for the elementary schools. For the middle schools, a minimum design of 1,100, and a maximum of 1,425. And then the high school is designed with a minimum capacity of 2,200, and a maximum of 2,850. And what that means is where appropriate. Certainly, you know, and I know Ms. Smith has had very, very many conversations with myself and the other facility staff, me and the other facility staff, talking about the concern of the creep of those schools. And it really comes down to, well, at what point, when you reach up from, let's say, 1,800 to 2,000, 2,000 to 24, 24 to 26, at what point do you build another secondary school? And the impact associated from a facility standpoint of building another high school is significant, because it really puts a dent, and it kicks the cash flow, which kicks the progress on all the other projects of upcoming renovations.
Essentially, it uses one year's worth of capital dollars. It would be the value approximately of building a new high school. So that, I mean, that kind of puts it in context about what a significant impact it would have. Now, if we're talking about high schools above 2,200, are we looking at if we have to go to the 28, more of a configuration around ninth grade, and ninth-grade center-type structure?
That's, that's part of it. I think the thing to remember, a lot of our middle schools feed directly into the high schools. So if you have a middle school of 1,400, for instance, Sandberg, it's only logical that when you, you know, so it goes from seventh to eighth grade, now you have four of them, you're going to be at around 2,800 students. So that's what we were, we were looking at, is the middle school that feeds a high school is roughly half of the high school population.
So that concludes the staff's presentation, just putting the information out there and going through these. I know you have a lot of questions and comments and conversation points you'd like to make.
Okay, Janie? And I was, if you have something, just give me.
First of all, thank you very much for the detailed information, the list of schools, et cetera. And certainly, I've been part of boards where we've tried to set much smaller limits for capacity, and then you find, over time, you can't hold them at a much lower capacity, partly because of lack of dollars, lack of space, et cetera. Several of the schools that are mentioned in the Drainsville District that indicate that we should be building more capacity, I absolutely support. When we come to renovate Cooper, clearly, we need that build-out at that school. Franklin Sherman's got an opportunity, and I know that the CIP even talks about, we may be able to build a little more onto McLean High School, and certainly Langley is being dramatically increased. I think that the ranges that you have put forth, I would support. And I also support the effort to attempt to make use of those flexibilities, and, but at the same time, there is a point at which we have to indicate that we would have to actually build a new school. But I think this is a reasonable way to go, it makes the best use of very scarce capital dollars. And it's a, it's a reasonable, there's, there's so much we can build into a residential neighborhood without totally overtaking a residential neighborhood. And I think the community needs to know that we will build as far as we can, but then, we're going to have to come up with other solutions as well. You can't, you can't go on forever just impacting. So I, I do support where we are going and what you are recommending. Thanks.
Kathy? Ms. Smith?
I was going to just surprise you and say that some of these sizes are unacceptable to me. I do believe, when you talk about having elementaries too small, that we do need to look at where it makes sense to increase the capacities of the schools. Because from an operating standpoint, too, it's more expensive to run those smaller schools. So I think we do have a responsibility to do that where it makes sense. So I'm fine with the elementary sizes. I am concerned that the middle schools are getting too big at 1,425. I'm so mad, I forgot all my notes at home. I think it has been 1,350, if I remember right, which I think is still a little bit big, but I could probably live with that in certain situations. But 2,850 is unacceptable for a high school to me. And I have lived through this with Westfield. I wasn't on the board when the size of Westfield was originally started, but we were stuck and we made it bigger. And as we look at education for kids, and I do believe if a school's too small, you're not going to be able to offer enough electives. But when you get too big, we want kids to have a comprehensive experience in high school. And sure, not that many kids are on the football team, or in a play, or whatever, but the bigger and bigger and bigger the schools get, it limits these outside opportunities for kids. And 2,850, I've lived this with my community, with Westfield, it is too big. 2,700's pushing it. I'm not pleased that we're going to be taking South Lakes High School to 2,700 kids. And I understand the difficulties with, with the dollars we have, and I think we have done a good job of advocating for our needs. I just, I can't support this as what's best for kids. You know, even if you're looking at breaking off ninth graders, I just, I can't support this. Thank you.
Mr. Moon? And then Ms. Schultz after that.
I, for me, as far as the size is concerned for high schools, or even the middle schools, I will not be able to tell at this point in time where I stand, you know, between 2,850 as a maximum versus 2,500. But I was going to ask you, something that Mrs. Smith has already alluded to, is as far as the program offerings is concerned, you know, setting that, you know, the numbers up there aside, for high school and for middle school, what is the optimal size for the program offerings? I know a long, long ago, like probably two decades ago, that I heard, you know, minimum you need to have, minimum at that point. At that point, the thinking was the minimum you need to have for high school is 1,400. There was a minimum, somehow that number is, got stuck for high school. But there was a minimum, but so what, but do you, what do you believe, right now, in 2015, to be the optimal number of the students who we need for high school offerings? From instructional point of view? That's all that I'm asking. Or if you cannot answer the question, maybe we will have an instructional person to get back to us.
From an instructional perspective, I would think 14's actually too small for a high school.
That's a two decades ago, as I said.
I think it'd be very difficult, even if you look at some of the high schools we currently have, I will tell you, some of our high school principals have a hard time making some of their sections work, some of their classes work. I happen to, you know, I think we are, I mean, I agree with Ms. Smith. I really do think these are getting too large. But, you know, I just don't, we just have such limited dollars, you know, to make them, you know, to meet the needs of our schools. But 1,400, I would think would be way too small.
I'm not pushing for 1,400. My question is, that was a two decades ago, what do you think in 2015 to be the, for optimal course, program offering is concerned, from that perspective, what is it?
I think you would need probably 2,000 students to offer a full array of the course offerings that we like to offer. And some of those are right under it, and sometimes they have a hard time making their sections work. But I think probably 2,000's a pretty.
2,000 and about 1,000 for middle school, is that, or middle school would be different? It would be?
Middle school gets to be less of an issue, because some of the courses, like the elective options, they're fewer in number, and so it's easier to make them kind of work at the middle school level with smaller numbers. It's just at high schools, we offer just so many different elective options, and to make those viable, you have to have a larger number.
Yeah, I'm not trying to dispute with you, Dr. Garza, but if you could, if somebody, you know, sent at least this one board member, the rationale or explanation behind, or school board members, with 2,000 being the number for the optimal course offerings, or program offerings, or any number you can pick.
I'd be happy to have someone look into it. I doubt very seriously anywhere there is any record, anywhere of any number that's optimal. I'd be real surprised to see that. I was just sharing with you, kind of what my experience has been, but I doubt very seriously, out there somewhere by some expert, there is a number. Because I think it ranges all over the place, depending upon school districts, and their challenges on the capital side. Jeff, are you familiar with any place we could look to answer Mr. Moon's question about?
Yeah, no, in terms of, in terms of me and the program, Dr. Garza, your statement's correct, because there have been a number of different studies, number to the Council of Educational Facility Planters International has data that they look at, and what appears to be the optimal. But then again, it becomes on information that they gather from individual school districts, course offerings, discipline issues, a myriad of different elements that come into the, into the mix. And I think it also depends on the progressive, the progressiveness of the school district. We provide a lot of opportunities for our students, especially at the high school level. And I always use the term when I get in discussions with my colleagues from surrounding jurisdictions that don't have full-day kindergarten, and don't have as many trailers as we have, and don't have as many, let's call it music classes at the elementary level, when the program only calls for one, that we have up to about five. I say, well, it's progressive communities have expectations, and therefore are willing to fund, to provide those for their students, for their children. And I said, and so therefore, there's, from a facility standpoint, maybe an unintended consequence, but there is a cost associated in terms of the capital side. It's a long way to answer that there's no specific criteria, but again, it's been the range, and we've been talking about this, where you have anywhere from 18, 16, 18 to 2,200 in terms of a sweet spot. But again, there, I don't know that there is something, but I'll be happy to ask the instructional folks if they, and I think they'll come back, yeah, I haven't, I haven't seen it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moon, Ms. Schultz, and then Ms. Evans after that.
I think it's rare that I can say that a work session is one of my favorite topics, but this is one of my favorite topics. It's weird, because I wasn't quite sure where my colleague, Ms. Smith, was going, because I was like, yes, I'm with you, and I was mostly. And we've talked a little bit about high schools. My concern is, is definitely the maximum on elementary schools. And I see where you're going, Dr. Garza, that, you know, there's not a right answer out there. The right answer is, you know, what, what any given community, you know, faces, what their, what their total student population is. I mean, it's such a dynamic set of data that go into making that evaluation, that it's the question of what's right for your community. And I'm going to bring to my colleagues' attention the recent Haycock and Greenbrier West Lemon Road slash Poplar Tree discussions, because those are the most recent in memory that I have. And the discussions around what an elementary day is like for the educators in our building, the administrators in our building, families, and definitely students. And when you hear things about, you know, lunches starting at 10 o'clock in the morning and going until 1:30 in the afternoon, you hear about not enough program space to bring in, you know, special programs for the school, no place to park, carpool line problems, difficulty delivering specials, art on a cart, you know, physical education space, the outdoor space that's needed to support, you know, nearly 1,000 students versus, you know, some lesser number. And operational cost isn't the only cost that's out there, there's an educational cost. And when you hear about, you know, students, you know, having to go in twos and threes to, you know, the clinic, and, you know, they lose, you know, by the end of the day, they lose a half an hour of instructional time. Well, if they lose a half an hour a day over the course of seven academic years, that's their foundation. That's a lot of time lost. And so I'm worried about the, you know, the children who are sitting in a cafeteria, and the din is so loud that they're not eating. You know, they're, they're sensory overloaded, and how, how prepared they are for the rest of their academic day. You know, we talk a lot about quality of life in Fairfax, and how we make a lot of decisions in Fairfax based on quality of life. Well, to me, packing almost 1,000 kids into a building, when, if you look, you know, the stark differences at middle school, where they're only for two years, the minimum is 1,100. There's very little difference, you know, at a percentage level between a 950, which include kids down to, you know, five and six years old. And that's for seven years. So I'm concerned about that size. And I don't think that we can just say, well, having another administrator, or having some more teachers, makes it an untenable cost. I think there's a lot more that goes into, you know, can you even get the children into the building before the start of the day, and then what does that do to their day? And then the one thing that I didn't see here is brick and mortar, brick and mortar, brick and mortar. You know, you know, that, what, you know, what is this discussion around a minimum and a maximum? And is it a minimum and a maximum with brick and mortar? And I think that's got to become part of our, you know, colloquial, you know, vocabulary, is, is that, you know, we start working towards solutions that involve brick and mortar, and that if there are, at the time that we institute a trailer, or a quad, at any facility, that there's an exit strategy. You know, yep, we know, we understand, we're here, and this is temporary. And I think it ought to be addressed in the CIP, and our, what our min and max are also have to be a min and max with trailers. So I am concerned, too, with the 2,850 on the high schools, I do agree. I think we're, we're at a very, very difficult point. I'm fortunate in having a secondary school, it tends to be a little bit more elastic, because there's some give. You know, if you have to rob Peter to pay Paul, if you've got a small or middle school, you know, you maybe have a little bit of flex room. And so we don't experience it that as much. But it's one of the reasons I think that there's a very good component around secondary schools, and that maybe that was something that we explored in the past. And I think there's some potential efficiencies to be gained by that, by, you know, having a kid a part of a community for six years, instead of two years, and then resettling and moving on. So I have the least to say about middle school, maybe because I don't see as many of those impacts, and it is, right now, in most places, two years, except Ms. Evans. You know, we always have to do the asterix, except Ms. Evans. So I am, I'm not thrilled with that top number on either elementary schools or high schools. And I know it involves more money.
May I quickly respond, because I think Ms. Schultz brought up something I think that's very important for clarity around this conversation. When we speak of, and correct me if I'm wrong, Kevin, but when we speak of this conversation around what would ultimately be our standard, kind of our evolving standard, it would not mean that we would go out to schools across the county and change them, or add portal buildings to get to that number. This would mean, when we touch a school, whether it be through a renovation or a replacement school, that's when the standard would come into place, into consideration. And I think that's an important question that you asked. We're not talking about going back out and adding portal buildings to try to get everyone up to the standard. It's when we touch a school, and we're trying to maximize limited capital dollars, what would then be our standard? And so, for an example, if, if it's somewhat like this, and we say, okay, now, elementaries are going to be between 600 and 950, that means if we go in and we're renovating one of our real small schools, we would renovate it to 600, and would not keep it at 350, or whatever that number is. The other point that Ms. Schultz was making, I think, is also very important. When we're, when we have schools that, where we do have a lot of, a lot of portal buildings, and we have schools that are way outside their capacity, that exacerbates greatly the situation that Ms. Schultz illustrated. And that is, kids in cafeterias that weren't, weren't designed for that number of students, where the infrastructure, we're trying to make a small school a large school, just because we've been so strained, and we add portal buildings, and Kevin deals with this more than anyone in this room, I imagine. And that makes it, the strain that you just described, the parking, people trying to get, you know, ingress, egress around the, around the buildings, very, very difficult, because they're not designed initially for that number. I think where we do get, start with the design, with a brand-new school, we say it's 950, I think we are able to build and create situations that are much more conducive to a larger population. But that's not our current reality in many cases, where we just have big schools kind of squeezed into smaller footprints and smaller infrastructure and design. Would you agree with what I just said, Kevin?
Correct, and I think, you know, it's funny, when we go into our older schools, and these are, you know, I don't always wash my hands of every problem that preceded me, but we've all been in our older schools, and they were adding additions, and these things seem to meander into, right, Dan, we've had this discussion? And trying to actually bring a school like that in line with the edspacs is a... Ah, it is, I'll get a little bit closer, sorry. But trying to bring those schools closer into the edspacs is really difficult. It's not just the ingress, egress, that, I mean, that was a great point, is some of the neighborhoods can't even support the amount of traffic that we would propose to bring in, if we wanted to, you know, an older one. I mean, Janie, you've got a couple like that, and I think Sandy and Patty do as well. And so, those are serious considerations, I, I agree. And I, you know, from our office's perspective, we would not propose a school that's in a neighborhood that doesn't even have the road network to support it, to grow to that size. But, so I agree with, with.
But the question that I have, though, when you, when you talk about that within a neighborhood, and you talk about things like, you know, wanting the parents and the community to be vested, and to have skin in the game with, with the school. And if you have a spring fling, or if you have a back-to-school picnic, and you have, you know, almost 1,000 students at an elementary school, what you're doing is, you're, we're naturally excluding families because they don't want to deal with, you know, the, the ins and outs. And it's hard on administrators, it's hard on educators, on how you process through, you know, those many, you know, families on, on any kind of fundraiser. I mean, it's, it, those are the latent costs to what my colleague, Ms. Smith, brought up, the operating cost. There are, you know, impacts to, to school communities when they get too big. And frankly, in terms of land space, I think we're going to have a lot more opportunities to get smaller pieces of land where we're going to have to be a little bit more nimble, because the large tracts of land are gone. And it takes a lot more to run a school that's, you know, one and a half times, or, you know, plus the size of, of a smaller end of the school. And so, you know, looking at, you know, acquisition of land, use of buildings and facilities, And so, you know, looking at acquisition of land, use of buildings and facilities, I don't want to hem us into too small, too large, because we may be, to some degree, subject to what's available to us and have to think outside the box. So...
Yeah.
Well, I think that's why the range was suggested here.
Right.
Because not in every circumstance is a school of 950 appropriate, nor would it be what we would recommend. And that's why we came up with ranges, because we didn't feel like, in all cases, one hard and fast number is really going to meet our needs. And in terms of vertical schools, our capacity at Bailey's Upper is pretty big. I mean, what is our student maximum capacity?
That's a little over 800.
Yeah.
And we have, one of the designs we have is for a full 950. It just has, if it's designed...
But your point is, I mean, still a very legitimate point.
Yeah. And Dr. Garza's point about the range and the purpose of the range, you know, and the question Mr. Moon asked, I've got such a good team that I work with. Kevin reminded me that annually he provides what our average size of all of our facilities, and we distribute that. And Amy Hobbin had sent me, while we were having this discussion, the American Planning Association's listing and range of recommended school sizes. And it's kind of interesting because when you look at the elementary reference that they have, they have a range, 230 students to 900 students. They have a range for junior high, is what they call it, of 750 to 1,500 students. And of high schools, they have a range from 900 to 2,500. So once again, each of these things are kind of applicable, regionalized, and then when you get into the instructional component, what types of offerings that you actually have in your school division.
And I think you would find, I think we have a lot of variation compared to lots of school systems. However, suburban, large, urban, suburban, fast-growing school systems, they're pushing the upper limit. So I would imagine on those numbers you just described, if they looked at it, it would be on the higher end for school systems like us, on the lower end for more rural areas. And so that's why it's really hard to say what's optimal. And what I found in some of the research I've done on this, because I had, remember, I closed 11 schools in my last school system, so I was asked this question a lot, and there's no correlation. You can find large schools that are very high-performing, and you can see small schools that are very high-performing. Likewise, you can find the opposite. I mean, at the end of the day, you want conducive educational facilities, but we know that the real important thing is having the right people. Once you have those great facilities, it's also having the right people, you know, leading and teaching in the schools.
Ms. Evans, then we're going to go to Ms. Reed.
Thank you. I have some of the same concerns that other colleagues have expressed. And I would like to have the answer to the question Mr. Moon raised before making a decision on this, not just at the high school level, but at the middle school and elementary school level. You know, what is best educationally? Because if we're just looking at this from a facility standpoint, I think we need to answer the question, what's best from an educational standpoint? You know, during the Clifton debate, I thought that one of the pieces of information that was brought to us was the Elementary School Principals Association had taken, had weighed in on this. My recollection, Elizabeth, I don't know if you remember this or not, I thought that they had said that 300 to 500 was ideal for elementary schools. Is that correct? So, you know, it's...
Maybe their opinion?
Yeah.
It was maybe their opinion. And it's different, we're talking about what is the maximum, what is the appropriate standard? What is the minimum? The minimum, we probably could tell you, you almost have to have this number to be able to offer all the programming that you would need to offer. You know, so there may be a way for us to give you a minimum. But in terms of, you know, this is the best number for educational reasons, I will assure you that there's nothing out there that says that.
Well, and, you know, at the elementary school level, I can say I have some of our smallest schools and some of our largest schools. I do not hear complaints about a school being too small.
I would weak to my comments.
All right, okay. But, you know, Sleepy Hollow's on here, it's just been renovated, Woodburn Beach Tree. I don't hear people saying that, at least the parents don't say that, that they're too small. What I hear is from Bailey's and from Glen Forest, which is over 1,000 students, and that raises concerns, like the lunch and the gym.
They're not designed for that.
They're not designed for that.
And they're not designed for that.
That's true. Yes, they're not. But I would raise that, that I have more concerns about the upper end of these numbers than the lower end. And of course, when I see these figures, I always think of the exceptions. You know, I think about, okay, my middle schools have sixth grades in them. Would they have the same? And of course, Glasgow has the largest number already, so I don't know if we need to make a difference for elementary schools that are only K-5, you know, make an exception for, you know, whatever number we come up with, there are always going to be some exceptions. We're also looking at Stewart, which has a very small footprint. I don't know that we could bring it up to 20. I don't think we can. I don't think there's a way to bring it up to 2,800, even if we wanted to.
And that's why the range is...
Right. So I raise that. You know, I do think we need to somehow at least be thinking about what's best educationally, not just what's best for facilities. And I also wonder too, Mrs. Strauss brought up the fact that Langley's capacity is going to be expanded in Cooper's as well. And I just, I have to wonder about that because Cooper is projected to be at 65% capacity in five years.
You have to look at what's happening in the surrounding schools.
But Cooper already has a huge boundary. I mean, we can talk about this, but...
Kilmer, yeah. But you have Tysons and the Silver Line and Hacking and Reston.
You have gap users who planned to address that.
Oh, yeah.
They have about 400 students out of Cooper at other schools, is the reason.
So, okay, but we're adding capacity at a school that's already severely under capacity. And so, you know, we need to be thinking about where we're doing this, not just...
Look, let's be clear on this topic. They're not, we're just, they're in planning potentially in the 2015 bond for Cooper. We haven't started their planning process, so that's to be determined down the road. It is planned for us to expand their capacity and bring students back to Cooper, but that's in the CIP. That hasn't been necessarily finalized and determined by the board moving forward.
Okay. Well, I do realize we need to try to make the size of our schools as efficient as possible and right-size it, but right-size it doesn't necessarily mean just as large as possible.
Thank you, Ms. Evans, and Ms. Reed. And then we'll go to Ms. Tana Kofax, and that's it for the list I have so far.
Thank you.
Others want to speak?
I guess so.
I'm joking, I'm joking. We have you both, yep. I'm sure by the time we're done, everybody's going to be speaking on this topic, because I know we all have some strong feelings about it. Ms. Reed?
Thank you. I want to start by thanking staff. I know this is a lot of information to put together and a struggle to present it clearly, but I feel like we at least have the picture now of what's going on. Whether we like it or not, we all understand it, so thank you for that clarity. But I do want to start by taking us up 10,000 feet and talking a little bit about our strategic vision, because I feel like we've kind of jumped into some of the details without talking about what do we view our schools of the future to be? You know, are we going to continue the same ways of instructing? I would argue that we can't do that anymore. You know, we're going to have to be using technology, we're going to have to be using spaces creatively, like auditoriums and cafeterias, right? You know, perhaps I keep being the advocate for the year-round school, and I know Dr. Garza cringes, but when I lived in Colorado, we had tracks, and that was one way to solve this issue. So I feel like we need to start with our strategic vision and at least have a discussion, maybe not today, but another time, about, you know, what do we envision? Multi-use facilities. I think we've been talking about that, but from what I see here, it seems to be assuming kind of the same way that we're doing business. So that's one thing I wanted to throw out there. I like very much Ms. Schultz talking about the trade-offs and impacts, because I think that just looking at numbers doesn't give us that whole story. And I know we've talked about the number of offerings in some small schools, like Falls Church is a good example, where they just cannot offer the depth and breadth of classes that some other high schools do. So right away, we've got that educational inequity issue, and I think we need to talk about that. We have the sports and after-school activities, you know, that I think would beg for a larger school, relatively larger, so that more kids can participate in more activities. I have elementary schools that can't all attend an event together because there's not enough room. So to me, and there's probably a dozen more impacts that we all haven't even described yet, so I feel like we need to get some of those on the table. And then there's the whole educational aspect, and I know several of my colleagues have brought that up. But I continue to feel like every time we talk about facilities, we should have an instructional person up there too, because it continues and proliferates, it proliferates the silo approach. And so, for example, you know, back to this issue of the vision, we've got all these special programs in these schools, the AAP Center issue, the academies, the pre-K, the special ed rooms. I mean, all of those, I guess, are incorporated in what you call program capacity that a lot of people don't really understand. And the issue of critical mass, I think all of these things need to be discussed rather than just looking at these numbers. But this is a good place to start. I've got more, but I'm going to try to be quick here. The F-PAC has done some good work and has done a strategic facilities plan, so I would hope that we could take a look at that and make sure that we're considering some of their suggestions and thoughts in that regard. And last but not least, I just wanted to ask for the record here, it seems that we're about $13 million short in our approved CIP. And I wonder, and for those of you that aren't following, it's because the Board of Supervisors had promised us that money, and now it seems to be backing off on the promise, but meanwhile, we have an approved CIP with that cash flow incorporated. So I guess my question, it's related, is that really some of this information might even have to change as a result of that, if we don't get that funding. Is that true?
Yeah, that's one of my favorite parts of my job is the CIP cash flow, which we know expectations change. So last spring, when I think there was a letter that said that they were going to supplement the capital fund with $13.1 million, I took that money out of future cash flows, as you said, and everything was accelerated. In fact, that was a question, and I think that I provided an answer when that would happen. So in a week or two, I'm going to sit down with the county bond manager, and I'm going to have to include at a minimum $13.1 million in infrastructure management. You know, we have roof replacement, which I would not have any funding for, HVAC, ADA, there's quite a wide range of items that we can't just stop our programs for a year. So that's, it does have a profound impact, yes. Even one year where I thought I would pick up that money with starting about, you would see some accelerated planning in 2017 and construction in 19, everything slides back, and it's just not one job, because I timed the projects to start in the specific order that they're listed in the queue. So it's about, I think it'd look like eight projects, eight or nine were going to be delayed.
So I guess my question for my colleagues in the chair in particular is, is there anything else that we should be doing to address that issue? I know I had my Providence budget meeting last week with Supervisor Smith, and this issue came up. And she and I, let's say, had a difference of opinion about it. And her opinion, and perhaps it's the supervisor's, that there was a caveat, that they would provide that funding if, you know, they had enough resources to do so. And Ms. Quinn was there, she heard me, and I begged to differ. I said, we understood it to be a given, and it's in our approved CIP, so we have a misunderstanding and a problem that needs to be resolved.
But they acted on it, but they took action on it. Did they not take action on it, or they did?
They did.
They approved it.
They approved what?
The ar-...
Endation. The joint resolution. Yes, I just want to be completely clear for the record when we have this discussion. So they, both the school board and the Board of Supervisors approved the recommendations of the Infrastructure Financing Committee, which contained a great idea that moved us forward, to set aside this $13.1 million for the purposes of, just as Mr. Sneed had so well-stated, renovation and HVAC and some of these other things, roof replacement, things that just can't wait. And you're right, I thought we all agreed to that.
We did. And I think since you directed the question to me, I think we need to refresh everyone's memory on the Board of Supervisors, that that's what they agreed to, is we continue forward and to have meetings and to continue to talk to them, because they ultimately, you know, this is what we agreed to.
I'll yield and let my colleagues speak now.
All right, thank you. We have Ms. Tana Kofax, and we're going to go to Ms. McLaughlin.
I'll try to be succinct, since many of my colleagues have expressed some of my concerns. I have to say, I am a bit apprehensive of, I appreciate the ranges, but I am a little apprehensive about the upper end of the scale, both for the elementary and for the high school. I have done much scientific research on this, my Google research this weekend while I was looking for this. And, you know, I mean, it will be interesting to see what you all, what staff finds, Dr. Lockard and Dr. Garza, because, you know, my minimal research, you know, there's arguments for and against the economies of scale of a larger school, and what that magic number is, you know, is often defined by the people in the building. And, you know, that's where we are. And that's, and I think, you know, I would like that information, and I think we do need to be careful on the maximum end, because all of us who have good intentions now are not always going to be here. And because if it was something other than the CIP, you know, where you have to plan years out and facilities are planned in this way, if it was something you could decide on a whim, oh, this year or within a six-month time period, but that's not what this is. This is looking outward, and for many of the reasons that many of my colleagues, including Ms. Schultz, you know, there are neighborhoods that can't support it, and the elementary schools particularly, you know, when you hear, you know, some of my schools, they'll tell me now, oh, we can no longer have this program where the whole school can be part of it. And that's, in an elementary school, that's, you know, it's difficult. So things like that. And I know we're talking facilities and we're talking monies and dollars, but I do think as all of my colleagues just about who've talked prior to me, talk about that educational aspect and where, you know, the economies of scale balance upon that. And so, that's kind of where I am. I'm, again, a little bit concerned about the upper ends of the ranges.
Yeah, I just wanted to add a little, you know, there was a little report with the history. You know, we started to build 950 elementary schools new quite a while ago. It's probably almost 25 years, I would say. So this is probably, I'm not sure, I wasn't around at the time, but, and the evolution of the middle school capacity is based on the fact that these are now team-taught schools, so their capacity is calculated a little bit differently. I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood the context. So there's only one school since 1992, I believe, that was new elementary school that was less than 950, and that was Coats. That was designed at 830, and that was intentional. But everything else, much to Pat's chagrin at this point, but, so everything else has been designed at 950.
That's an important point. And just for the context, our current standard for elementary is just 950. It's not a range at all, it's just 950. Middle schools is 1350, and high schools is 2,500. That's the current standard. Okay.
Good, thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. And we're going to go to Mr. Velkoff and then Mr. Makamine.
So there's a benefit for going last, because you get to reflect on what everybody had to say. And the first thing I'll point out to everybody is, we just sound like we're ruminating over the Goldilocks dilemma, you know, what's too small, what's too big, and what's just right. And I have to tell you, for those of you don't know, my district in Braddock, I was running the numbers on my schools, and in the report, it talks about that 18 out of our elementary schools are designed to be 600 or less. I have three of those schools in my district alone. And in particular, I want to point out Little Run Elementary, which is where my children actually attended. It's one of the smallest in the entire county. It, right now, has an enrollment of 341 students, and in five years, it's projected to go down to 293. We closed Clifton a whole lot sooner for being a whole lot bigger. So when we talk about what we're doing in terms of our strategic facility... So, um, when we talk about what we're doing, um, in terms of our strategic, um, facility needs, uh, I think that this, um, presentation this morning is just touching the surface of a much more, uh, complex discussion that this board absolutely needs to engage with our superintendent and her leadership team. Um, I, I'm very worried when I just look at, um, the things that people cited today. You know, um, program offerings, when you're too small, you know, I, I can tell you, talk to the kids who go to an elementary school where there's only about 300 kids there, what it feels like, um, to even just have enough classmates, um, to try and do any after-school activities. There's just not enough kids. What it's like to show up your freshman, or your, um, seventh grade year going into a middle school, and you're one-third the size of the other elementary schools that have showed up. You almost feel like you've, you've gone to a brand-new school. You've moved, because, um, there are so few of you, and, uh, you don't know anybody. Uh, it's, it's amazing, just drawing on the range of looking at a school like, um, Woodson, where Mantua, which is in Patty Reed's district, has a capacity of 1,000 students. And, you know, as I noted earlier, Little Run's capacity, 391. So the question becomes, um, looking at, uh, what do we wanna do with these numbers? I wanna echo what my colleagues have said. When you look at that Goldilocks, um, you know, lens of what wears just right, what's the sweet spot? I gotta tell you, the high schools is a perfect one to look at. The low end of 2,200, you're talking about 535 students in the graduating class. And as, as someone who graduated from a high school that size, who had children, who've now attended a high school that size, it, it does feel like the sweet spot. It, you know, it really gives a chance for kids to be involved in a lot of the different program offerings. There's educational, uh, classroom offerings, but when you look at the high end there at 2,850, so you're talking a graduating class of 700 students. And the things that people talked about, do you have a chance to make your sports team, to, you know, be in the school play? So those are critical. I guess my big thing that I wanna ask is, when we're looking at all of this, and we've got to be thinking outside of the stovepipe, uh, because Ms. Schultz and I share districts right next door to each other. And, you know, I'm looking at the fact that we've got elementary schools where there's, um, some that were still under-enrolled, and then some that are above. So, and then the final point that nobody talked about is the fact that if you do look at where we have capacity around the county, we're trying to figure out how to do early, um, education, preschool education. I, I can tell you, we've got places in my district right now, based on projections, that we will have space for those. Um, but looking at the, the boundary attendance, especially at elementary school, uh, so that fluidity of just making decisions on where our kids are going, I hope continues to be part, be a big part of it. So my one point, since Mr. Stork wants me to wrap up, is that, um, this conversation and listening to all of you, to me, is another emphasis of why our, our board needs to have more extensive dialogue about the challenges of offering educational opportunities and what we're doing with the buildings themselves, because I, I feel like this just opened up, um, a whole new conversation, not, not necessarily bringing us closer to where we need to be.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. And we have, uh, Mr. Velkoff, and then Mr. McElmyn.
So, um, if I may ask, what is the board being asked to do? Are we being asked to approve a potential change in policy here?
The, the answer to that is, is, from my perspective, is yes. The, the issue, the discussion is more of a general conversation, but we have policies that we have established, and as you see on there, those are pushing up some of those from our established policies.
So what I think I heard was then, that we, we already have a policy that elementary schools are at 950, when we build one, and then we're saying, when we renovate one, the maximum will be 950, and we will be at least 600. That's the thing we're being asked for. Now, middle schools, 1350 is the standard, and we're doing, so likewise, okay. So these are the things that we're being asked to do. All right. And then I've heard some-
Just for, Mr. Velkoff, excuse me. I think just for clarity purpose, you're not approving those today, but as we look at the new iteration of a capital improvement plan, what we're wanting to do is reflect, potentially, the direction of the board in new standards around this. And we've heard many of you repeat, you know, really want to discuss this, and so that's why we put it on the table, instead of just leaving it the way it was. So, not officially approval today, though.
And Mr. Velkoff, part of what we'll have as the next step on this, is if we go this route, then we have to change the policy, and that, that will require board action, and which is where we will have that as part of our next steps.
Okay, so this is getting a sense of where the board is-
Correct.
-to help guide you in coming up with the proposed policy change. Okay. Um, you know, several folks have talked about, for instance, 2,850 is way too high for a high school, or there was also reference to ideal sizes of elementaries being 350 to 500. Um, you know, I think that's all nice, but, um, there's a reality here, which is, these folks are dealing with limited money. And I think if, if we're gonna challenge them, um, to keep that 2,850 number lower, well, I think we have to take responsibility for what's the alternative, which is, I think, building new schools. Right? Um, so I, I guess I'm just not completely comfortable with where some of the discussion's been going, because it doesn't factor in all of the things that we need to be responsible for. And I guess what that leads to is, a question that I had with that, is what is, what are the criteria that we would use, that we are using, to determine when we can no longer address things with boundaries and so forth, and we really do need to build a new school? How, how do we decide to cross that line?
Well, Mr. Velkoff, it's a combination of factors, really. I mean, when we take a look at our forecast through our whole capital improvement program, and we forecast what the growth potential are in certain areas, and we identify, and we have in the past identified where we think new schools will be warranted. What we do is, we watch through that process, and Mr. Sneed and his staff does an outstanding job with Amy and so forth, to identify where we have a renovation going on. Can we provide addition? Does the core in that school, meaning, does the gymnasium, does the cafeteria, um, does it provide for the opportunity to go ahead and do an enhancement of capacity to accommodate the C requirements in a short-term growth mode? Um, and if it does, then we accomplish it through that. If it's not something that is, um, a, a worst-case scenario of all of a sudden this cavalcade of an influx of students, um, when you look at the high schools, for example, we talked about South Lakes, um, there had been a high school that had been identified in the, um, CIP in the past, and keeps getting pushed out because silver-line growth and so forth. Well, the growth has not been to the extent that was originally anticipated, right? So we had to modify our plan. Well, we still had creep, we had growth, we had additional students identifying, and what we did was, we identified how to accommodate those with these additions during renovations at Oakton, Herndon, South Lakes, to accommodate that growth, because it wasn't enough to warrant a new high school. So in other words, and I'm just using around numbers, if you have 300 student growth that are projected in, over the period of time, that originally was anticipated to fully house a high school, um, of the size that we're talking about, building a 25-student high school, well, 300 students doesn't beget a 2,500, and also the capital investment for the balancing that you were referring to. So it, it, I think it warrants, you know, I enjoy this discussion, from an intellectual standpoint and from the instructional, educational standpoint, because I'm always eager to learn, um, where, where the energy and inertia is in that space. But the reality, coupled with the fiscal fiduciary responsibility, and also the capital componentry of it, really becomes these competing needs, that finding the sweet spot of the balance is at the crux of it. So when we do go ahead and identify that this is a breaking point, or the projection in this area is gonna be such that it would warrant that, that's when we have the new school. And in fact, have done so, if you look at Masoncrest, if you look at some of the plans that we have for bringing some of these older schools back online, uh, we're looking at ways to where the growth will warrant, instead of capacity enhancement, new facility. I hope that answers the question.
Yes, that does, thanks. And really quickly, um, listening to some of the conversation about the smaller schools, for instance, uh, say a 300-capacity school that's in a neighborhood where, honestly, if we increase capacity, we don't know how we get people in and out of the building. I mean, I wonder if, in a case like that, if we should be considering the, um, difficult decision of closing the school, and looking at a facility like that being repurposed to something else, and having that capacity picked up somewhere else.
I know, me personally, I would never make that suggestion. So I flipped through that once, uh, so, I, but, no, that is, that's a good question. You know, um, one of the things, if you look, uh, up in my, uh, office, I have a board that has the historical, uh, capacity information enrollment of our schools back to about 1919. And some of these older schools, it's quite amazing to see how many students we had in, you know, schools. So it has Franklin Sherman, Bucknell, these schools. It's a significant number of students, much higher than we have in there today. And for some reason, back then, they were able to do it. I suspect because most of the kids walked or rode a bus, but I think that the kiss-and-ride exacerbates the situation as well, you know? But I wouldn't, I don't know that we would say to close the school that way.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Mr. Sneed. Uh, Mr. McElmyn, then, um, then Pat, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Stork. Uh, so, I guess this comes from the perspective of someone who was, um, at an elementary school that had about 300 students, um, and a high school that had 1,000 students. That was a graduating class of 212 at Marshall. That school has now doubled in size. It's at, um, we're, we're gonna cut the ribbon a week from Wednesday, um, and it's already at capacity at 2,000, in Tyson's Corner. So I think that was, um, a mistake, um, but one that we, we now have to deal with. And, um, so when it comes to capacity, whether it's, it's large or small, I don't think that's an issue. I think we are going to provide a great education to students, no matter where they are, in what facility they're in. Um, and it might be tough, but we'll do it. Um, but I think it also, as Ted was partially alluding to, has to do with our funders. If they're not gonna give us more money, well, we're gonna have bigger schools. I mean, it's, it's pretty simple. And, um, I would like to reflect a little bit, um, on what Patty said, um, regarding the county's, um, 13 million, 13.1 million dollar commitment. Um, and the question I have is, if this is something that they have approved as a board, is there a legal requirement for their, them to provide it? And if so, can we sue them for it? So I would like, I would like an answer to that, um, moving forward, um, with, with Mr. Foster.
I will take that up with Mr. Foster.
Um, thank you, Ms. Darnett Kofax. Um, the point I would like to make on that is, why do we continue to bother having joint committees if, if our partners, our supposed partners, are continuing to renege on these promises? I have no desire for any of us to spend any more hours on a joint committee if these supposed partners can't be taken at good faith. I'm tired of it, and I think we need to address that as a board.
Okay, Ms. Hines.
Yes, thank you. Just a couple of things. Uh, the, as someone who spent a lot of time in elementary schools, um, the concerns that I hear people saying about, oh, high numbers in an elementary school, I do think, and Dr. Garza keeps mentioning this, I think those things happen because you have more kids in a school than it's designed for, right? I mean, in my nine years of teaching, I spent seven of them in some kind of trailer. So I spent my whole teaching career in over-capacity schools. And that's when you have this long lunchtime thing, and you have all these issues. Whereas if, if a school that I was teaching in that had 800 kids was designed for 800 or 900 kids, wouldn't have had any of those problems. We wouldn't have, you know, so it's a, it's a question of, um, not sort of, you know, what's like the Goldilocks ideal, but here's the reality. We're going to have schools this large, are we gonna build for it or not? Right? So I think this is really just, as Mr. Velkoff said, it's just looking realistically at where we're going demographically, where we're going financially, and so, you know, and I also, maybe I just, maybe I'm just different from some people, but I don't see size itself as an issue. I'm looking at South Lakes High School, I, thank you, Mr. Sneed, I took a look at the plan for the addition there, that was very, it was nice to see. And what I, uh, found out was that the new wing that's going on there, uh, will be able to be used as sort of a ninth-grade wing. So right away, and so we're playing, we know South Lakes is very large, but one of the, there are other school systems that, for decades, have been managing very large buildings. And so there are ways to do it that give you a sense of sub-schools, true sub-schools, you know? Um, so I think, you know, we have things to learn from other people. We are an urbanizing, rapidly-growing county, we don't have enough money, and so I, I think these, uh, I, I look at these ranges, and I think, you know, they might even be too small at the top end, honestly, just knowing the reality of where we are. But I, I can definitely support what I see there. Um, and, yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go, I know we have a number of go-backs, and I'll address those in just a second, but I'm gonna speak, and then we'll go to go-backs. We've kinda left it open-ended for the first part of the conversation, but the second part, we're gonna have to kinda tighten it down, 'cause we're not gonna be able to get all the topics in. But, um, first to start off, I, I think elementary school size, I think the range, 6 to 950, I can accept. The key is, what is an existing building versus a new building? New buildings, build them 950, and I, and they, nice buildings, they work well, but it doesn't work for the smaller buildings. And when we try to, to shoehorn a 950, or even a 800 or 900-size building into an existing footprint that was built for, frankly, 500 or 600, which is what, the ones I'm particularly thinking about that are in the CIP, that are listed at 800 or 900 students now, I think that's, I don't know how that's done and done acceptably, because the common areas just don't fit, the parking lots don't fit, the traffic flow doesn't work. Um, and, and, and this is really the core issue for me, and this is an issue I'm willing to fight anybody on, which is the sense of community that must be part of every single school that we have. What does that mean? We have neighborhoods that many of these schools were built around, and, and where you have that sense of community, then if you don't protect that, you don't create a situation where people feel part of a, an overall community, then we are losing, I think, one of the most important parts that's made Fairfax County schools so successful, is that we have people who truly want to excel because they're part of a connected group of people who, who encourage them, support them, have high expectations for them. So I think that's, that's a key part of this for me, and particularly, I'm passionate about it now, because I'm seeing the potential impact of this with the CIP and with the things that we're getting ready to do in the Lee-Mount Vernon area. And we are going to see situations where potentially schools that frankly don't fit the community could be built, or could be added on to. So that's a key part of this for me, and one that I'm going to, I'll be bringing back to, I'm sure, if, if I feel that we're not able to, to address those, I think, important community concerns. The middle school and the high school max, they don't work for me, I won't support them. I think 1350 is clearly the max. I don't see how we can do that and have, frankly, a, a, the kind of school community that we have all been so supportive of and feel so strongly about. At a high school level, you know, 2,500, 2,600, that is absolutely the max. Um, I fought that once before in South County, when we got, actually, $10 million out of the Board of Supervisors that we weren't expecting. And they wanted to add a wing on to South County Secondary School at the time, and myself and the community fought that very strongly, because we did not want, and really thanks to Kathy and Ms. Smith and her, frankly, advocacy and her, really, the conversations we've had about the size of schools and the fact that Westlake had the same footprint and had that wing added on, and how, how she felt about that. I, you know, the community went to bat, we said, "Nope, we can't do that," and we ultimately were successful at building a middle school instead of adding a wing on to the, to the secondary school. So I think we can do it, it's not gonna be easy, it is, it is a fight, and I'm using that word deliberately, because we are going to have to marshal all of our resources to educate the community and tell them why those-sized schools are not what we signed up for, not what our community truly wants. And some of the Board of Supervisor members who talk, I know, talk to us all the time about their students, and what a successful career they had, their children, what a successful career they had, and talk about what they learned, well, they went to schools that were different than the schools that we're talking about building. And we need to help them understand why that different time is not what we want for our, our kids today and for future kids. I think there's a couple of things we can do. One is, I think policy changes need to go in here to address that, and, and frankly, to get the school board member involved with the planning approval process earlier. Um, I think that's essential before something gets put in the CIP, is that it needs to be, it needs to have gone through a vetting process on the board, and, and at least particular individuals that are associated with those schools and communities, to make sure that that seems consistent with the community's expectation. I think there's an opportunity for cooperative utilization, community schools, we've talked about it before. Um, I know the Board of Supervisors, Jerry and I have had, Helen and I have had many conversations, he's been very supportive. I know that that's something we can do a little bit more of, that can make a difference. So how do we go forward? I think we have to have, our school community, our board here, has to be more visible and more clear about the consequences of building larger schools, and- of building larger schools and say no, and specifically highlight what that means, and then talk about the dollar amounts that we need from the state or the Board of Supervisors or wherever that is in order to keep that from happening. It absolutely starts with $13 million. I think, I think there's clearly some more direct opportunities for conversation that need to be had on that before we, we go to any further additional actions because I think we can make that kind of point to the Board of Supervisors and have them follow through on what we both know is a commitment that's been made to improve our schools. So we've got a number of things going on, but I think we have to draw a line in concrete at this point in time, not just sand and say, there are some school sizes that are too big, and a 2850 high school is too big, and a 1425 middle school is too big, and I'm not gonna support it. Okay? We are going to go to go backs. Here's our problem, folks. We've got two more issues that we need to discuss. I know the, the middle one, we can maybe keep that fairly streamlined because we've already talked about it once, but that means people are gonna have to be very focused in their comments or questions. And then the last comment, last issue, I'm hoping will be fairly streamlined as well because it's, hopefully it's more of an FYI. And I have a few things I'd like to have people to be talking about. But we have 45 minutes to finish, really in time to give us a half hour for lunch. So I'm just kind of setting this up for folks to say, we're gonna do go backs. I'm going to put a minute on the clock here. I'm gonna tell you when a minute's up and ask you to please honor that. And I will hopefully be giving you the stare or something like to maybe to get you to, to do that.
And maybe, Dan, on the, on the go backs, it sounds like, at least what I'm hearing from some board members, that we need to stick to our, the maximums being our current standard. And if you could just give us some guidance on that, with the exception, I think, of, of one board member. Elementarys, we're actually, having a minimum expands it, but we're talking about the top end. So I'm hearing, can you be more specific about keeping it to our current standard or not? Okay, the current standard, it's on that first document, is 950 for elementary schools, which I think, Dan, you may, the way you described that, I think, was very helpful, meaning that in some cases, we will build to 600 because it's an existing facility, existing footprint, and it's not practical. So we, we kind of like the window to be more explicit about, about that. Middle schools are current is 1350. We've added a minimum of 1,100 because in some circumstances, we would not go up to 1350. So the minimum, minimum right now is 1350 for middle schools, and then the high schools is 2,500. That's our current policy.
And that isn't a policy that's attached, it's part of the stuff that's in Board Doc, so you can pull it up and look at it. And that's, that's one of the things that we'll, I think that we'll address as part of the, the follow-up steps on this. Okay, go backs. We've got, we've got, I know at least five or six people, so I'm gonna time you at a minute and I'll let you know, folks. Start with Ms. Schultz, then, then Ms. Smith, then Ms. Strauss.
I hope to be a good example. Offer all programming. I don't know that that's necessarily the value of all communities, is that we have to have every possible program, which Ms. Reed brought up. We may have to be, we may have to discriminate in order to get to the sweet spot on the size. Wraparound or multi-use campuses are, is something that we haven't discussed. You know, I've advocated getting Windy Acres Farm, and we may have to have a campus that we go back to building pools in high schools and having more access for the community to our facilities to garner the support that we need on the capital side. I vehemently oppose whatever we can do to redraw boundaries to make things work. I think we have to do it through program offerings and incentives if we have to drive people to the, the smaller schools. VDOE on their site does define sixth grade as middle school. And so, you know, that may be something else that we have to explore as we run out of spaces and if we have more room. So I, thinking outside of the box, like my colleague, Ms. Reed said, I think it's going to be imperative going forward.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. That was well done. Ms. Smith?
I just wanted to reference the Infrastructure Financing Committee final report, that it does say that both boards agree that the school board may need additional time to reach their goal because they talked about doing a sinking fund. But it does reference, the committee recommends that the schools adopt this recommendation. Such funds would be placed in an account with the school construction fund established as the school's capital sinking fund. This increase in the transfer should not affect in any way consideration of the county transfer of the school operating fund, making this recommendation cost neutral to the schools. The only part of the report that it says they're going to get to, as they can accomplish, is the $20 million eventually in the sinking fund. But that, they reference taking time to do. The $13 million, 13.1 million, there's no reference to if we can do it or not. It just, I mean, it makes it sound like they're gonna do it. Mr. Moon's been trying to look for the date of their action. I think they did it under Board Matters, didn't they?
I believe so. And I believe it was back in probably January or February timeframe. So we could have staffed to see if we could find their motion language as well.
Report was in February, so it had to be after that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. We have Ms. Strauss and then Dara Kofax.
Okay, two things very quickly. The schools that were built in the 50s and the 60s did not provide space for special education, kindergarten, gyms, any of that. And so, and actually, in the 90s, the staffing formula for upper elementary was 27 to 1, 28 to 1. So there were a lot more kids in those schools, but programmatically, it was very, very different. I am concerned as we go forward. Also, schools under 600 do have difficulty staffing because I know my schools that have been small over time have asked, please create us a little bit bigger because we're having difficulty keeping class sizes down. I am very concerned where the master plan for the county has, has planned for urbanization and how we will in fact accommodate that growth, whether or not the approved housing is actually in a school boundary. Everything around that planned urbanization, because we're seeing it now, creates high-value communities for families to live, mostly in townhouses. And, you know, we already know that many more families are much more willing to stay in townhouses because they're great. So we cannot continue to just accommodate through trailers forever and ever. So I, I am less concerned about the upper end. I think I have to be realistic with the resources we have. I absolutely support the lower end, and I support the range. Spring Hill Elementary can well accommodate the numbers that are there because of their geographic location and everything else that's there. So that's my last comment. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Ms. Darnett Kofax and Mr. Moon, then, then Ms. Reed.
Mine was a question on the 950 minimum, a maximum for the elementary size. You, Kevin, you stated, when, when did that come into play? And, and just restate your, what your answer to me, because I have a question.
I think the, the first, which that was about, that's about 36 classrooms, was in the early 90s. It was probably Willow Springs, one of those schools, and that vintage.
All right. So, so then I guess would I have questions because we're looking at these people with, these schools with design capacity below 600 students and some that are currently under construction that are not slated for that. And I'd just kind of like to understand, yeah, understand the rationale.
Well, again, well, why didn't we just assign them for the, remember renovations are only, the design capacity is just based on the particular boundary. Renovations are not intended, at least until these recent discussions, were not intended to alleviate adjacent capacity issues. This is something new that we're proposing. So Garfield, that was, you know, their, their, their capacity or their design capacity was just meant to accommodate the, the enrollment in the particular boundary.
And remember, this has been kind of this ongoing evolution of conversation with F PAC and others where, where those precious dollars we have that we prioritize, we've had these, a couple of times these conversations about that we prioritize those monies around renovations plus adding capacity, not just renovations. You remember some of those conversations? And so that's been, as, as Kevin, I think, just pointed out, that has not been the conversation in, in years past. But because we have such capacity issues that it's been recommended to us by F PAC, I happen to agree with that recommendation. I, I think the board has had this conversation a number of times, too, is when we are renovating a school, is that not the time also to be contemplating adding capacity? So you, you make a very good observation. That has not been the case heretofore.
Okay.
Thank you. I have Mr. Moon, then Ms. Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Stork. I was just gonna reread that, that part of the recommendation from Infrastructure Committee that the Board of Supervisors' commitment to provide additional $13.1 million, there was no condition attached to it. It was an absolute commitment. I mean, I even remember that, that commitment, which would be starting from FY 2016, I as one school board member, even wanted to know whether they could start from FY 15. But for, from FY 16, there was an absolute commitment from the Board of Supervisors. I was very, very disappointed that county executive did not include that in its budget proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Ms. Reed?
Thank you. I'll try to be brief. I feel like we need to have a, a policy on trailers, and maybe that's part of a subsequent discussion. I mean, I have eight schools that have over 10 trailers and have for quite some time. And we have schools in the town of Vienna, I hate to call them out, but I'm going to, who will not have trailers. So just, I'm just saying, I believe we need to have a discussion about that. I also think we need to have a discussion about the impact on class sizes. I mean, some of our small schools, as we well know, have small class sizes because of the way the numbers have shaken out. Again, no value judgment. I just feel like we need to discuss it. These are all interrelated issues. I like Ms. McLaughlin's idea about moving certain programs where we're jammed in one school and we've got capacity someplace else. And I know you all do that, I think, as a matter of course. Here's one that, that's gonna make your head spin. Loudoun County's capital cap each year is 200 million. And they don't have full day kindergarten. They're smaller and they're growing also. So, okay, just let that sink in for a minute. I'm, okay. Also, the Fairfax County bonding and projects and priorities, you know, Ed Long wants every other year to give the funding to us and then to the county programs. And so they've kind of just drawn that line in the sand. No discussion. Well, you know, maybe we need to have a discussion about that, right? And then last but not least, the, the reality is that several of my schools who are now beautiful, who've just undergone renovations, right, Marshall, Oakton, et cetera, Freedom Hill was one, overcapacity the minute work is done. So we've got to do something differently somewhere. And I know we did build in the, the zoning for Oakton Elementary in case we did have to go back. So that was one lesson learned. At least we do have that option. Okay, I'll be, I'll, I'll stop now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. We will go to the board in our next steps. And the first one, I think, is pretty straightforward. It seems like there's a clear consensus that we need to follow up on that. And I know Ms. Darnett Kofax will be doing that on our behalf. Board consensus revising the existing policy. I think there definitely needs to be some sense as to whether or not, and we can maybe do this here, whether or not people want to change. I've heard, I guess what I would say, I've heard a general consensus that there's not an excitement to change it higher, but I don't want to misread, I just want to not let it misread, but don't want to misinterpret the, the conversation we've had this morning. If anybody, let me just get, the, the number of people who feel like we, the existing capacity limits, maximums that are up there are what they want to continue with, and therefore, ergo, we would not need to change the policy with respect to this particular item. If those in favor of that, if you could just raise your hand to get a sense of people who, who want to keep the basic capacity limits the same. And then I'll ask for those who want to change it. The change is not really so much as, we don't know what it is. That will be a, a conversation or a committee that would probably be asked to, to pursue that and come up with, and probably governance given to.
Could I ask for clarification on what you're asking us, though?
Sure. Well, maybe it's Infrastructure Finance. How many, the existing policy says 950, 1350, and 2,500.
Right.
And what staff brought this morning to us was that they were recommending something or that, maybe, maybe not they're recommending, but they're saying we need to do something more than that in order to address our existing needs. So we can, we would need to change the policy in my mind in order to be able to do that consistently. And that would, that would be reflected with, with how we would go forward. There would need to be some way of adjusting that.
But my, I had a question for you on, which was, is, no matter what we do here, is there an understanding that there are always going to be exceptions to this?
I, I think that's the standard, yeah. That's, I, is there anybody, people nod their heads on that one. I, I think yes, so. I, I would agree with that. Ms. Smith?
And I think that would need to be referenced in the policy, that if the board gets pushed to a need that a school needs to get above these limits, it needs to come before the board. The board needs to be able to speak publicly about that issue. You know, we're in this situation now, okay, a school's gonna be at 2,700 and it kind of happens. But I think that we're better served if there's more of a board conversation around those exceptions because then that brings it to a higher light with our funding agencies.
Okay, Ms. Hines?
Well, I just want to make sure I understand what you're advocating because I, I think I don't agree with it, which is, I think what you're asking is for facility staff to have to come to the board every time it looks like they're gonna build a building that is above whatever the cap is. Or renovate a building to make it above what the cap is. Well, if that's, so basically then, if you set it at 2,500, they have to come to us every time? Okay. Well, I disagree with that. I mean, I think they need that flexibility. And if we're not gonna give them that flexibility, then, then I say we definitely have to go higher because these numbers are not reasonable.
Okay, so I think, I think there's a consensus roughly around these numbers, but there clearly needs to be a look at the policies, what I'm hearing, because I, there's something else I would add to it. But.
Are we gonna have a vote?
There's a consensus for.
Let's have a vote on this.
No, I, I know. There's, I think, in terms of the maximums that are up here now and reflecting the existing policy, so whatever that existing policy is, and the maximums that are part of that policy, do people generally support those existing maximums? It's kind of, just want to get a, a sense of the board because somebody's gonna have to take the other information that we're gonna be giving this. And I don't know if that goes to Infrastructure Finance Committee or who that go, or, I'm sorry, the, our own. We ultimately need to send it to somebody to, to work through these issues in more, I think, more detailed way. And that will be potentially one of them, but at least whoever, whatever group that is, needs to get a sense of the board, I think, right now, that either these maximums are what we want to keep, or we are more willing to have them go higher, or we want to modify how we, how we look at these maximums. So that there are exceptions or not exceptions. I mean, I, that's the, I'm just trying to give the next group that actually does a deeper drill on this, a clear direction from the board. I think it's gonna be important to them in doing this work. Ms. McLaughlin?
Yeah, I would offer a suggestion. I, I think listening today, that we're not, you know, we're all over the place, basically. I don't think there's a board consensus to say, keep it where it is, go with the recommendation that was presented this morning. So it might have to go to F PAC or CPDC.
We need to do a hand raise first, which will address that, the point you're making. Do a hand raise first. At least give us a general direction. Ultimately, the, the details will be coming with whatever policy change the board ultimately votes on, but at least get some sense to the group that's gonna be putting it together. Ms. Smith, did you want to address that particular issue? Because I want to try to get a hand up here, just to get, move forward a little bit.
My recommendation for how we move forward is that we see where the board consensus is, that staff then would draft a new policy that comes to the entire board. I don't think we need a separate work group to deal on this. I think it needs to be the whole board.
I will, we'll then have a, I'll then ask, I'll then ask that before I ask this, okay? So folks who generally are satisfied with the existing maximums that we have in the policy, if you raise your hand, please, just to indicate your, your interest in existing policy, maximums under there. Okay. So, and so those who would favor something higher as an existing policy, if you'd raise your hand. Okay, so that clearly is a split and we'll clearly need, somebody will need, we need a group that works through that. Okay. And then the, the approach that, I voted, I voted for, sorry. The, the approach then for doing that, one is, and I'll, I guess, Madam Chairman, I don't know if you have any particular thoughts that you want to guide us on, whether or not this should go to a particular committee or if this should, staff should do some work and bring it back to the board as a whole to talk about that. I'm not, I, I, and you, you and Mr. McElveen, I know have, are more facility involved than I am, so.
So I'm gonna make a recommendation. Can we see where the board consensus is over different levels? If the board consensus is over elementary, middle school, and then high school, where the push point is? Then we need to come up with a recommendation. We need to think about the roles of our committees. CPDC is not a facilities committee. The role of CPDC is only to oversee F PAC. So I would be very uncomfortable with putting that as part of their role. I do think this is board work. One of the reasons we went to, the work we need to do is a board. But if we find out, the only issue is at the high school level.
I understand. Does anybody else concur with Ms. Smith? I understand. Does anybody else concur with Ms. Smith?
I, I do, I do. Because she, Ms. Smith helped me, helped clarify. Yes.
So, do we want to do that? So, I, I'm gonna just go ahead and do the, the elementary, middle, high, just to, maybe that'll narrow down the, the differences a little bit. So, those in favor of the existing policy, maximum policy for elementary school, please raise your hand?
Give me maximum, then.
Okay. This is maximum. It's the range, we have the range. Just, we're just picking out the maximum. Because even the maximum doesn't work for all buildings. The current maximum. Yes, ma'am.
Current one, right.
There seems to be a broad consensus for that is the current maximum. Okay? Middle school, how many people agree with the current maximum in the policy for middle school, which is 1350? How many people agree that that should be the maximum for middle school? If you'd raise your hand, please, if you agree with that. Okay, there's clearly not as much consensus for that. And then for high school, the current maximum for high school is 2,500. All those who agree that that should be the maximum, with exceptions, of course, but, but the maximum for.
Higher than.
So, higher would be obviously more than that. But the maximum is, is 2,500. Okay. So, you see that there's clearly some differences. Elementary school, there's practically none. Although I would, I would characterize the range as being very important too, because I couldn't support an 800-size school and an old elementary school, because I think that would be too big. But I, I realize that's part of the discussion. So now, where does this information go? And Ms. Darnett Kofax, you want to give us some, as chair, you want to give us some guidance about how you would recommend we, we pursue this issue?
I didn't think about this, because, I mean, this needs to be a board consensus. And I guess, in order to move on, I, we're gonna have to discuss it one more time. I think what we have to do, what, what I guess, what I, what I'd like to know now is since 1350 was the no consensus and 2,500, were the majority of people, maybe I'll just do head nods, were the majority of people in those two areas, maybe you can do, were you in, in favor of upper, or were you in favor of lower? Maybe just kind of do this right now. So I, because I don't know where you were.
Right.
I'm asking you, right now, there was no consensus on maximums for 13, 1350 or, or high schools for, at 2,500. And my thing, and, and I could not get a sense from any of your comments, whether or not you felt that you wanted that to be higher than those current caps, or you, lower. Where was the, that's what I didn't understand. Because from the comments.
Caution. My, my, come on, yellow light is, red light is blinking. You know, I, I wish we were in a position to lower all these numbers, all over the place. Man, that, you know, I think that would be great if we were in that position. I think before we could even consider lowering the number, we would have to go back and look at impact. Because what that would mean then is we would have to extend our financial, I mean, honestly, projects that we currently have even financed, and budgeted in the cash flow, and even out, we would have to consider that timing. Because lowering the numbers actually cost us more, a lot more. Okay? So that's why that wasn't necessarily proposed or put on the table. And I certainly understand that sentiment. I, I would be the first to tell you, I understand that sentiment. So, that's why you have before you, we thought at least a range that does give us a little bit lower number in some places, I think is a good step in the right direction. But I just want to caution the board, if you want to lower the current in a, in a meaningful way, we'd really have to go back and do some financial analysis on that and determine what, what are we talking about in terms of financial impact?
Okay. If we could keep any specific comments now, if they want to, related to what Dr. Garza said, just to anybody who have any particular, that they address issues there. I'm afraid we're gonna, this could go on and on.
Well, I, go ahead, Ms. Reed.
So, my suggestion would be to have a vote. Mrs. Smith raised one idea, and I'm going to raise the complete opposite. I, I think we need to change the charter of CPDC. It is, these are facilities issues. And so, that would be my recommendation. This board does need to reengage in these issues. But it sounds to me like there's a lot more thinking and work that needs to be done.
I, I think that's what you're hearing. I think the, the issues, as I understand, is either you have a committee that actually works in, works this and tries to come up with something that might be a consensus of the board, or you have the staff do something and bring it back to the board as a whole. Those are the two choices that I hear, and I'm, I'm gonna defer it back to, to our chairman.
I, I would prefer staff, because we're not at the point where we're gonna change committees and charters and agendas at this point in time. And that's, that's a lot broader discussion to get to this issue. So, what we have before us is we have these current, these are our current maximums. And then staff had recommended a bit higher maximums.
But ranges.
But range, but ranges. Right.
And one more clarification. We're also recommending those ranges be used with renovations. Currently, the policy is just for new schools.
Mr. Stark, take the questions.
Ah, boy. Ms. Smith, then Ms. McLaughlin?
So, here's my suggestion. We seem fine with the elementary. With the middle school, I don't know how much the size is related to teams. There was discomfort for some of the board for the 1425. Some people didn't want to keep it at 1350.
Ms. Smith, I'm just, I don't, I want the board, we need to, just, does the board want it, we want to keep discussing this for, I'm, I'm, I need to ask this because, because we have two other topics, and we could, we have a choice at this point. We can either continue to discuss this, which I know we all have lots to add to it, or we, we need to, and we would need to defer some of the other topics, or.
So, here's my suggestion, that staff is listening to this. They know there's a push point between the 1350 and the 1425. And there's a push point between 2,500 and 2,850. The staff analyzes that. They hear what they've talked to. Maybe they talked to FPAC and they come back to the entire board with a suggestion. Because we're not gonna get to what it should be right now.
I, I agree. I agree on that. Ms. McLaughlin, then I have, Ms. Heinz?
I agree with everything Ms. Smith outlined, but I, with one addition. There is a reason that we have extremely expert, dedicated people serving on FPAC. And they also represent the community and stakeholders. I think I, it would be my idea at minimum, that when staff revises this based on what the board has said today, that they do run it by FPAC for conversation. Because if we don't have a board committee that everybody's comfortable with doing it, then that, to me, is the next best way of saying, before something comes back to us, it's had greater stakeholder vetting beyond just staff hearing us today.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Heinz, then Ms. Schultz, then Ms. Charles?
Just quick, I mean, when I look at that, I see no consensus. But what I actually heard was that there was not a majority for keeping the existing maximum, right? That there was a majority for doing something different. And we're not talking about going below. So the majority seems to think we need to go higher. It's just a question of how much higher. So I guess I'm agreeing with Ms. Smith, that on all of the, except for elementary, on these other things. You guys have already done the work of coming back with numbers. So I don't know what exactly we're asking you to do differently. But I guess, I agree that we, that we need staff to come back to us. And, and then we all need to just kind of bite the bullet and agree on something, I think, you know.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Schultz, then Ms. Charles?
So, I have a question for Dr. Garza on which, what you said earlier, in relation to this. If 950 is our current maximum, then what I don't understand is, when I look in the CIP, I see elementary school after elementary school after elementary school, even ones that have been recently renovated that exceed 950. And some of the issues that have been brought up, you know, everybody very quickly went to consensus on 950, but the seven years of the students in a school that is at these maximums, and actually in our own CIP exceeds the 950, that's where the rubber meets the road. And then we just went by on consensus. So I don't understand the juxtaposition between, that's our current policy, let's keep our current policy, there's consensus, and the fact that the CIP has so many of our, our elementary schools exceeding what our current maximum is.
Okay. And, and that's what we're trying to get to. Our current policy, these specifics that I gave you about elementary, middle school, and high school, is specific to when we build a new building. Okay? When we build a brand-new standalone building, we've applied this as a standard.
So, we're renovating beyond our maximums.
I didn't say renovations.
But we have. We've renovated beyond these numbers. We've, we've added to elementary schools and exceeded these numbers through, yes, we have. I mean.
Kevin, you answer.
I don't have it in front of me.
Union Mill, current, current capacity is 992.
Let's ask, let's ask our experts here.
All right. So, she's, she's right. There are a couple, these are not renovations. These are additions. I think that, I, I know we've had this discussion before, you know, absent a boundary change for a particular school, this is what, you know, typically we wind up with, is that you don't have another place to take the kids. So you, you're building bricks and mortar to accommodate them. That's precisely the situation.
That's exactly what I'm talking about, is the supersizing of the schools beyond what are, are stated.
Correct. But that's absent whether a boundary change would be acceptable.
Or program change.
Or a program, one or the other.
So, you know, what's been done in the past, what we're trying to do is be more explicit in the future about what we're doing. So with, with regard to a policy change, what we're suggesting by having ranges, is that when we renovate a school, that we would also apply the standards to the renovation. And that's why the window's important. You know, 600 to 950, for an example. And then moving forward, you know, looking at our, you know, geographic areas, a lot more boundary adjustments we're talking about into the future. So, what we're suggesting is our policy needs to be more explicit and, and more broad to reflect some of what's had to happen. It's been somewhat random.
Okay. Ms. Charles, and then we, I'm gonna go back to Ms. Darnett Kofax.
Could we do, could we do this separate vote on the middle school upper range?
I think we can take it.
Well, I think, I think staff has heard us on that, and there's clearly differences of opinion.
Because there may be more consensus on the upper.
We'll have a chance, we'll have a chance to vote on this regardless, because of the policy change.
And we have a scheduled meeting with FPAC, okay, in another, another couple of weeks. So we'll also talk with them about it and get their feedback. So, I mean, we'll keep working on it.
All right.
So, we, up on the board, we still have the, the next steps. So there will be next steps on the, the policy. And, and I'm, go back to Ms. Darnett Kofax, our chairman, to...
Well, well, there's plenty, there's plenty of time. I mean, these changes, what they, what we need to have in place before the new CIP comes out. So that's, you know, we just adopted one, and this is down the road. So, I think where I'm hearing consensus at this point, or what I would like to do at this point, whether there's consensus or not, taking this back to staff, ask what our current maximums and what their proposed maximums were. Try to bring that back to us. And then we will have another discussion. And I think people will have time to be more thoughtful and take into consideration everybody, everybody's comments. But we do have some time. And, you know, there'll, there'll be a new set of numbers. And the reality is, my colleagues, is they're not gonna be that much different. It's gonna be a little tweak. It's gonna be here and there. So I think we need to, to think about all of the things that each other has expressed and said when we come back to this. And we'll put it on a work session for a future date.
Okay. Any changes to next steps? Because otherwise we'll move on. Closing once, twice the next steps? On the next steps?
A little bit. Because I just, I have a question for what Ms. Darnett Kofax. We would, there will be a bond in November 15. And there will be suggestions for planning for some schools that desperately are gonna have to accommodate more kids. And I am assuming, and thinking of Cooper in particular, if we can't build to what we think we need to build at Cooper, I have not a clue where you're gonna put those kids. Because the county master plan has already been approved for the residential growth in that area. So I want to make sure that we are not cutting off our nose despite our face, where the master plan has already been approved by the county.
So your point is, are we, is this gonna be soon enough to impact whatever's on the, on the bond?
It's gonna be on the bond in 2015. Because otherwise, we paint ourselves into a corner that we cannot get out. And we cannot bus kids from one end of the county to the other.
Is the bond language general enough, generic enough to have that in it?
Right now, it's just the planning for Cooper. I mean, it does pose a problem, is I can't, I really don't want to start a design not knowing the scope, which would be how many kids you have.
That's my concern.
And Cooper is a conundrum, because of the fact that there's so many students at Longfellow and Kilmer.
That's right.
I just, the issue is.
Right. But I am concerned about that.
I'm trying to come back and try to wrap this up at the same time. So.
Right.
Ms. Stark, I hear the issue of timing and, and the bond, those, has already gone, the request, the request has already gone to the Board of Supervisors for the bond, right? And the language is part of the bond. So, what's, what's the drop dead date on that language?
We're, we're, I'm meeting with the county bond manager in two weeks, just to.
When is it? Traditionally, when is that language has to be, have to be done?
Typically, we approve it in May. I think it goes over in May. We do a, and we're gonna have an agenda item in April and a vote in May, I believe.
But I'm very concerned about that one.
I, I, Ms. Charles.
But we have these planning money. So I, we're, we're not restricted, you know, ultimately, yes, we're not restricted at that juncture just yet. But I think we'll be fine, because it's planning money for that purpose.
Okay. But we need to plan big enough to meet what we know is absolutely on the ground. Thanks.
I hear your advocacy, but we will schedule another work session. And in the meantime, staff will, will rework their numbers a bit.
Okay. So we're done with this piece. We have two more. The question is, it's been raised by one of your colleagues that their stomach was growling or something. I'm not really sure. But they'll remain nameless. But we, there was a request that maybe we go to lunch and then encounter, or go do the other two after lunch. And maybe we can be a little bit more focused on. Let me ask, does anybody have any strong feelings against doing that?
We've agreed on something.
Well, I, I'm not sure yet. Ms. McLaughlin?
Yeah, I just, maybe I missed it. But when we're looking at the next steps, for, will this then go to FPAC at least for?
There's two next steps. We, the consensus was, and the chairman said she busy, was gonna bring it back, have staff give us something and bring it back to the full board, is what I heard her say. Ms. Darnett Kofax?
So, we're not gonna utilize FPAC?
That's what I heard her say. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I'd already said that we already have a meeting scheduled with them. In fact, we're contemplating how we might look differently at the overall capital improvement plan with their participation.
That's what we, I think we all, that was all said earlier. Okay. We will adjourn. We will be back here at 1:15, folks. 1:15. Make it short. We're still gonna be behind schedule.